Here, Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hooper?
Here.
Thank you. And looking around to see what other guests we have tonight, I would, I want to make sure that I introduce DG Wolf, who is our administrative assistant to the zoning office, the director of zoning. And development is Mr. Mike Cannon and he's sitting there, Jim Steel Smith is next to him. And Jim is on the strategic planning committee. And right now, we have Steve Eisenbrown standing at the podium, he's on the strategic planning committee. And Molly Ridge is up front and Molly is with Crossroads. Community Development and she and Holly are working for the township zoning. No, I'm sorry, not the zoning commission, the township trustees. And with the strategic planning committee in developing plans and zoning district article recommendations for the township. And tonight, at a later time, we'll be coming back with a new article that's been proposed. We held a hearing last week and we recessed it tonight, but that hearing doesn't start until eight o'clock. Right now, we're in the regular meeting. And there, there's just a couple of things before we get into the first hearing. We have two hearings scheduled tonight, the first one is for, again, it's a recessed hearing from last month. It's on application twenty-three oh six for James and Deborah Clark. And we've, are scheduled to start that hearing at seven forty-five. Before that, in our regular meeting, I just want to give an indication that we had had some discussion about making some revisions in our procedures and our application. And one of our members, Virginia Lewis, has worked on that and drafted something which will be distributed, has been sent to members of the zoning commission. We will not be discussing it tonight, but we will try to put that on the agenda if we have time at our next meeting. On, well, a week from yesterday, September the eleventh, we will plan to have some discussion about that at that time. And we also have another hearing scheduled on that same night, that hearing though is for HTZ C twenty-three oh eight. And that is also posted on the website for that upcoming hearing. With that, let me just say, Virginia, since you have sent that out, do you have any quick comments you want to make to the commission about what you've sent?
Yeah, I believe you had trouble opening the one, I think I have fixed that issue so that you can open it. Joni said she had trouble printing it with the suggestions, but I know Tom, you got it printed, so maybe we can have DG make copies for everyone on that. I don't have editable copies of procedural guidelines or the application, those are PDFs that I pulled off the website. So I have simply commented on those. So we can just look through the comments and then make our decisions from there. And then, once we've made all of our decisions, have DG or Kendra, whoever has the originals edit them.
Well, I'm sure it's got to be in the zoning office, it's probably on DG's computer, but I know that for certain. And she may not know at this point either. But what we can do is if we have a hard copy, when we go through it, then we, we can just, of course, make our notations on that and then give that as a copy to DG for updating it. And Mike, yeah, is that all right, Mike? Do you have, is the, in terms of the process that we work with, it's going to be coming back to your office for updating?
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, the other thing then, in terms of opening what you sent, I haven't had a chance to look at the second, the update that you sent.
So the update, it does look like Tom was able to print most of it. So hopefully, we can get a copy run of this and then I can pass this out to all of you tonight and then you can have.
Oh, you have that tonight? Sure, we, after our meeting, we'll have DG run copies and then we can pass that out to everybody.
The one, if you look at online, says in the margin what I changed, but it, it still has your strikeouts and you can tell that it's a little different color here, so.
Okay.
Should still be able to get a decent idea of what was that.
Very good.
Actually, went through it and.
Oh, you, you, it worked for you.
Changed the colors.
Okay. So then, so then maybe we make it clearer, so it's easier to see.
Well, if you don't mind, Joni, then we'll ask, have DG at a later time, use Joni's copy and run off copies for us. That way, we'll have the, the color, the different color shows the changes, is that correct?
Yes, it took.
Okay. So we'll do that before we leave the room tonight.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, I'll leave that out front there. Anything else?
I don't think so, I think the other things are going to be more big picture things that we're going to have to discuss as a commission.
Yeah, well, one other announcement that I'll make is that I had done some follow-up, as I indicated to you that I would, with Mike and with Dave Jackson. And I also talked with Cory Go. And Wednesday, we're going to have a discussion with Dave Jackson, Mike, myself, and Cory's going, is he going to be in person or on the phone? He's going to come down, okay, so we're going to have a discussion about our procedure.
Okay.
And following that, that'll be timely in terms of, as we're looking to make the revisions, yeah. Okay? So that kind of will put us in, in perspective in terms of how we're going to move this process forward from there. Thank, and Mike contacted Cory about the possibility of him participating after he and I had a discussion. And I'm glad that he was able to make himself available because there are some legal things that we want to ask about.
Yeah, and here's some clarification we got to give Cory.
Right.
Based on the procedures and.
So that we can all be on the same page.
Yeah. Actually, we'd be, we're going to have some BZA members there too.
Right. Yeah, thank you. All right, that said, now, what time is it? Two more minutes, seven forty-five, I, I know Mr. Clark, I saw him back there. Mr. Clark is here for his hearing. We did receive the additional materials last week. He brought copies in, so we've, we've had them, hope some of you had an opportunity at least to look at them in advance of, of tonight's meeting. But we welcome, we, we're moving forward with that here momentarily. Are there any new applications to be received tonight? Wasn't expecting any, but, okay. Nothing in the works, Mike, that you're aware of?
Nothing that I'm aware of. Got a few people inquiring about it, but I don't have a list.
All right. Well, that's good. We want them to be talking and touching bases with you first, rather than just showing up here with something to hand you.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to get anything like that.
I hope not. All right. Members of the commission, does anyone else have anything you want to share before we move forward here? We've got another minute, we'll go in, I'll open the hearing. Nope, all right, very good. Then, at this time, I will do, it will recess the regular meeting. And then we'll open the hearing, seven forty-five, for application HTZ C twenty-three oh six for James R. and Deborah A. Clark. And again, now, DG, would you call the role for the hearing, reconvening the hearing, bringing it out of recess?
All right, Mike Kavler?
Here.
Joni Manson?
Here.
Virginia Lewis here. Tom Need?
Here.
Brittany Hooper?
Here.
Okay, our hearing is now open. And just as a quick review, we recessed the hearing back in the August, I forget the exact date, I think it was August the seventh. Due to some concerns and issues with the application, some items were missing and directed Mr. Clark in terms of some things that he should do. And with that, I'll ask either Mr. Clark and/or our zoning director if you would bring us up to date in terms of, we have the copies of the material, but I don't want to state exactly what it was that, that you did. But I do know that the main things were addressing the issue of labeling the adjoining, adjacent to a crossroad property owners. And there were issues with the survey and you have had a new survey done.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Clark, you have some comments, please?
Well, the surveyor, I went back and forth with.
I'm sorry, would you, either, I think probably best to go to the podium. Is that?
My name's Jim Clark, one-one-six-six-one, Woodtown Road, Galena. The surveyor, I don't think she's on the same page as Harlem Township. She gave me the net acreage, which I had to ask her for several times. So she found, that's why she finally gave me a, a separate piece of paper on it. But, but she also argues a point that if I have less than five acres, it should be FR one to begin with. So I just, that's why I'm here to try to get it re-zoned to what it should be.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had had discussions about the difference in what was showing on the auditor's website and what you had in the the documents that had been submitted. But now, the new survey is showing what acreage, sir? Four point seven four, seven seven four?
Correct.
Okay. And that matches the auditor's website, correct?
Yes. What I remember.
Members of the public, let me just briefly explain the procedures that will follow. As we move forward, I'm going to open it up for the zoning commission to ask questions. We started through the process, but we didn't finish it. And I think we'll go back and make sure that we touched all these bases. And there is one component that you did not, well, we never reached that point before, as we started the process. Right now, we know that we have the application on the correct form. We have progressed down to the specific zoning request, the zoning request being as Mr. Clark just identified, he's requesting zoning to become FR one. Current zoning is AR one. And AR one requires a minimum of five acres. His property now legally stands at four point seven seven four acres. As he pointed out, it's short of the five acres and therefore, the appropriate zoning for it would be FR one. But it was a historical lot where it had been created and somehow acreage got reduced. Are you clear on how that happened?
I assume by right away.
Is that as a result of Brookview Development going in or something? You're not sure?
Not sure.
Okay.
I've lived there since two thousand and two. And I gave you the survey from the mortgage company when we bought the house.
Yeah.
And I believe it, that's where they're taking the right of way off of is Brookview, not Woodtown.
Because now, it must be a dedicated street and maybe it wasn't before.
It's a township street though.
A township.
So it's maintained by Bart.
Okay, so it's being maintained, Brookview Drive is what we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, it being maintained by the township now, okay?
It always has been, yes.
All right, so, next question, members of the commission. I'll ask you that, just a second, I would finish after the zoning commission has the opportunity to participate. We will provide an opportunity for public participation, both those of you who may be present, as well as anyone that might be out there on Zoom. What we would ask is that you respect all the speakers and only one person can be heard at a time. So please do not talk over a speaker and do not carry on your own conversations with, with a near, a neighbor while discussion and comments are being made. Okay, with that said, back to the commission now, open for comments from the commission and questions. You may also ask the applicant any questions that you may have. First, was the correct legal description furnished in text and map and do they reinforce each other? That was one of our issues before.
They do seem to mention.
All right, anyone finds anything contrary to that? All right, Mr. Clark, thank you for getting that updated, you know, survey completed. Everything seems to match appropriately now. And have all the adjacent, adjoining contiguous and acrossroad property owners been notified? And were any of the letters returned, Mike and/or DG?
Yes, I've had one letter returned.
You have one letter returned, okay, is it undeliverable?
Um, I believe so.
Okay.
Do you remember who? Um, no, but I can go get it if you'd like.
If you know exactly where it is, would you mind, go ahead and get it? That'll let us know who, who didn't get notified, yeah.
And it should be kept with a file?
Yes. When she comes back, we'll make sure that she's aware of that. All right, while she's looking for that, I'll ask members of the commission, are there any other possible errors noted?
Not necessarily an error, just a comment, you were asking about where that right of way came off of. According to what we have on the survey, it was off of Woodtown, so I don't know, that doesn't really help clarify, but I don't know why, why the survey changed from when the property was purchased and now, but, you know, our, our map is showing that, that acreage that's the right way, only down on Woodtown.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
I initiated a ditch petition, when I moved there, the the ground was up higher and when it rained, it flooded Woodtown Road. So my, my neighbor to the north and I got petition signatures for a ditch petition through Delaware County. Soil and water came out, it took about four years to process that. It came out and we put underground piping and made a swell in the yard and that's when the additional easement was.
Yes, because you're, you have a drainage easement on your property in addition to the road right of way.
Correct.
And I see Karen has included that in her.
Yeah.
Different net acreage.
Yeah, they're both, they're both there.
They're both included in terms of calculating the net acreage.
Yes, yeah, we just were trying to figure out if it came from the Woodtown right of way or the Brookview and it's only showing on Woodtown.
Did you understand the question she's asking, one about the drainage?
More just a comment that I also don't know how we got.
Is the drainage easement on, associated with the front of the property on Woodtown or is it associated with Brookview or both?
It goes through both.
Okay.
It goes under the road of Brook, uh, Woodtown and it goes under the road of Brookview.
Okay. And that's why that easement's there, to give them access to the underground? Or, there's the, the, okay.
They come and service it. And ask them to come cut the big ditch, but they, they did the first year, but they're not coming back.
But you have, clearly, you still have enough acreage, that's not an issue. But it clearly falls into the FR one category and not remaining as a AR one, because it AR one, five acres and, and you'd be a non-conforming lot.
Right.
All right, the one letter that came back was from Jeffrey Alderman at eleven seven twenty-eight Woodtown.
There's been a couple of people.
And there's two addresses there, so the one to Brendan T. Crew at eleven seven twenty-eight Woodtown must have been delivered. Same address?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, possibly Jeffrey doesn't live there anymore, yeah.
Yep.
All right, clarifies that, any other questions from the zoning condition?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, Mr. Clark, in one of your previous though, drafts that you had submitted, you had planned to split the lots and I don't believe it's going to be splitable now that your net acreage is under four.
Yeah, well, I've got to continue with what I'm doing first.
Yes.
I understand.
I, you, I thought that you had had some discussions about that, so. You've gone through numerous iterations of this, so you, you know a lot more about your property now than you did three months ago. Yes. All right, what is the recommendation of Delaware Regional Planning Commission? I think we have that, right, DG?
Yes.
See, the copies will distribute to us. Okay, the Regional Planning Commission recommended conditional approval of the following rezoning request James and Deborah Clark. Do we have their minutes, so we know what the conditions were?
Yes, I'm going to go get those.
Did they specify the conditions to you directly, Mr. Clark?
I don't understand.
Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, did you have any conversations with them?
Although, when I was trying to figure out what to do first.
Okay.
I talked to the health department, the regional plan, fair, that guy, and it comes back here.
Well, we will.
I think DG will get it, but I, I think.
Yeah, she went to get it.
If my memory serves me right, it was something about, in case it was, in case it was to be split or something like that, which doesn't.
And here we go, we have it right here, thank you.
I put the Clark right on top for you.
Yeah, there is, thank you. All right, let me read the conditions that they specify. Staff recommends conditional approval of the rezoning request by James and Deborah Clark for AR, from AR one to FR one. To, on the basis of a soils report, should be reviewed and conceptually approved by Delaware County Public Health prior to the township approving the zoning request. They have stated that previously, and basically, we said that's a new request and we've never done that.
Well, and what's the point if it's just changing the zoning designation, but the size of the lot doesn't allow for a split or anything anyway?
Yeah, but there, there says that the, the point of the change was to allow a future lot.
Yes, but.
That may be important for them, it's not important for us.
It's right. Whether.
Maybe irrelevant or not, but it's no longer big enough to do.
But he's not coming for a lot split, he's coming for a rezone.
For our purposes, it's irrelevant.
Yeah.
Whether they, whether he can legally make a lot split or not. And when they say this now, I'm wondering, I'm going to have to ask Scott about this. Prior to the township approving the zoning request, maybe all they're referring to is you, Mr. Cannon, approving the request. Once it comes, you know, if he's doing a lot split.
Rezone for the last split, but they shouldn't even be addressing that.
I don't know why they put that in there, that's, that, that's, we've never considered that.
I don't know why they're putting it on there.
For our zoning purposes, we don't make it, use that as a factor.
Well, if you don't see him, we'll talk to him first and I'll talk to him next time I see him.
I assume it has something to do with the fact that there's a ditch, there was a ditch petition.
Yeah, it could be. But for our purposes, at this point, we don't need the Delaware County Public Health Department's soil report for us to make a decision about whether or not to allow for the FR one to be recommended.
Does it say a soils report or is it just, we're supposed to look at the soils map?
A soil report should be reviewed and conceptually approved by Delaware County Public Health prior to the township approving the rezoning request. But I need to do some follow-up on that, because that's something that.
You've been to Delaware Health, right?
No.
No.
I went to Delaware Health. And then I found that I had to pay more money and to vent more of ours and I didn't even know what's rezoned, so I pushed that to this. But my question is, where did that come from, is that?
This is from Delaware County Regional Planning Commission.
From the past couple of months, I mean, is that something?
This was a decision that they rendered on July the twenty-seventh.
Were they asked by the trustees to do that?
Yeah, they were, we submit, we submitted your original application to them once we received it on July the third. As we do all applications that are received for a zoning change.
Okay.
And Delaware Regional Planning then takes action on it at their regular meeting each month. And that's usually the fourth Thursday, I think, of each, of each month. So that's, that's why we had this.
I have a thought.
So every, every application we receive goes to regional planning.
Okay.
For that recommendation. So it wasn't anything out of the ordinary, unusual in your case, it was standard practice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding to that particularly? Now, future lot split, that'll be an issue that he will deal with, with regional planning and the Delaware Health Department. Not with, with our department, not with the zoning commission, nor with zoning. Okay. Now, I'd like to open the discussion to the public. Are there any members of the public, either in person or on Zoom, who have a question or a comment relating to this zoning request?
I want to clarify which one it is, we might have some people joining that are expecting this to be the county line discussion.
They were, for the eight o'clock hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we will open the eight o'clock hearing when we finish listening.
A bunch of people have joined on Zoom and they might be confused as to what you're talking about right now.
Oh, if they've joined late, yes, I understand.
Just for the eight o'clock meeting, they might not know that you're still talking about the seven forty-five.
All right, well, no, you're right, thank you for pointing that out. If anyone that joined Zoom for the eight o'clock hearing on the Article thirty-five, we are not discussing that at this point, we are discussing a zoning request from James and Deborah Clark and its application HTZ twenty-three oh six that we're currently dealing with. And with that said, I, again, I'm asking, are there any members of the public who need, who have a question or a comment relating to application twenty-three oh six? I'm not hearing any on Zoom or in person, therefore, we'll close the public portion of the, of this hearing and come back to the zoning commission, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, inasmuch as application HTZ C twenty-three oh six conforms to the intent of the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan and appears to meet all applicable aspects of the Harlem Township zoning resolution, I move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees that said application be approved.
All right, thank you, Joni.
Second.
And it was seconded by Virginia Lewis. Any further discussion? Members of the commission? All right, hearing received none, then I will call for a vote call out.
All right. Mike Kavler?
Hi.
Joni Manson?
I.
Virginia Lewis?
I.
Tom Need?
I.
Brittany Hooper?
I.
Motion carries, so, Mr. Clark, your property has now been approved by the zoning commission and recommended to, will be recommended to the township trustees for their approval. They will hold a hearing, once they receive our recommendation, they'll schedule that hearing. And the likelihood and our expectation is that they will receive this and schedule the hearing at their next regular meeting, but the hearing will be scheduled anywhere from ten to twenty days after, or thirty days after they're, after they receive it, okay? And there is not a specific letter sent, but it will be. And there is not a specific letter sent, but it will be posted online as to when that hearing will be.
Okay.
So I would suggest you look online so that you you will know specifically when the hearing is located, or call the zoning office. After the trustees meet at the later this month, and they'll be able to tell you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. With that said, then, since we have formed a recommendation on this application. I would. And obtain a motion to adjourn hearing on HTZ D twenty three oh six.
Mister Chair, I move that we adjourn the hearing on HTZ twenty three oh six.
All right, thank you, so that hearing is adjourned, and with that said. Now we're ready to move into the hearing on HTZ C twenty three oh seven. Which is. The County Road Overlay. DG?
All right.
Yes, call the roll again.
That will be Mike Pabler.
Yeah.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Virginia Lewis here, Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hope here.
All right, the hearing on HTZ C twenty three oh seven is now open, and we are considering county line. Road Overlay District, you have copies to distribute of the latest version. For those folks who are, who have joined us on Zoom, and if there's any new members present, we would ask that during the hearing. Since we opened the hearing a week ago, we recessed. The hearing at that time to tonight, so that. We would provide the opportunity for regional planning to provide a review. And we did receive that also, that review, and would you? You have copies of that to distribute, don't you DG?
Of the.
Yeah, the the review from regional planning. And the details.
The minute.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go get them.
Thought you already had them, my bad, I thought I thought you had run those off. Well, members of the public, if you did not. Observe or participate in the hearing that we had a week ago. On Monday. Then. What we did at that time is we went through the document, we identified any specific changes that needed to be made. And we asked for those details to be recorded by Holly and Molly. Molly has done that, we have a listing of the changes, the document that is now up on the website. DG, I want to verify, what's on the website is the one that reflects these, those changes, correct?
Yes, I updated that this morning.
All right, yeah, so.
So is that the same as what Tom sent out today? He sent an email today, right? With the overlay.
The one, there's, there's not been any changes made since Molly forwarded this to us on August the thirtieth. Or six.
Oh.
What, what was changed? Well, the only thing that might have been different is the map. Uh, for the overlay area. That overlay map that's up online now is the correct one. The one that had had been originally put up there turned out to be. The, that old one, that was an error, but it's been fixed. What we have tonight is what's up on the website. But thank you for asking that question.
Well, yeah, I thought Molly sent it out, she sent out what was on the website today, just letting people know about the meeting tonight.
Oh, okay.
It did not link to the updated one, it linked to the old one, because I copy pasted it from my previous email, because I did not realize that there was a new one available. Good, so. I mean, if people accessed it through the township website, they would be seeing the updated one if they accessed it. Through the email I sent just earlier today.
I'm sorry, Molly, but I, if you, would you?
Oh, sorry.
Go to the microphone so that everybody can hear you, including us. I'm not sure, I thought you were talking about Molly Ridge, you're referring to Molly Snodgrass.
Yeah, so I sent out an update.
Your name and your at. Molly wasn't here when we started, Molly is a member of the teaching planning committee. So the question that Mr. Eisenbrow brought up has to do with something that she sent out today, to whom?
So I.
To whom did you?
I sent it to the Harlem Township Distribution list, so like the four hundred and some emails that we have. I sent a kind of reminder email as like, as a follow up from the email that I had sent notifying the. List of the original hearing date, I included in the original email, a link to the overlay draft. So that people could access it from the email. When I sent the reminder email today saying, hey, the hearing was recessed, and the, you know, resumption of the hearing is today. I included that same link, which points to the non-updated version of the overlay. So if people were, were to have clicked on the link in my email, it takes them to the old version, so they might not have. Seen the latest updates. I did not know that there was an updated version available on the website, so if I had known that, I would have obviously sent the correct link. So that's where, that's just a call out, so that if anyone sees, you know, if anyone's talking about an update, that doesn't reflect the version they have.
What we will do, we will go through. The overlay map and show it online here and talk about the change, so that everyone that might have had a question about that. It will, it can all be clarified.
Okay, that's fair.
It was, I know it was a minor kind of a change, but it definitely was a change, all right. So with that. Let's see now. The process that we have done before is that we tried to do both going through and checking. The changes. And then we've got the review from regional planning to go through, Molly, do you have a copy of that? Okay, so what we would like, what I would like for us to do then is to. Go through, first of all, I guess, starting with our, with the changes that we made at our last meeting. The changes are in the document now. But they have all been listed, so members of the commission, as you've gone through. Let's find the information here from regional planning. And then we can go through, make sure.
I've got my copy marked up with the page number.
Okay, well, if I can find the pages here, I thought we had that ready, but my bad, we did.
It was on there, page ten.
It starts on page ten, here you go.
There's stuff before page ten.
All right.
But the, their suggestions start.
There's a lot of wording in advance of page ten, but the actual. Article thirty five County Line Road Overlay District, they identified certain, made specific comments, and as we're going through. We can do the same thing. So that we don't have, go through it twice. If we look at our summary of CR Development Standard Changes in Article thirty five, section thirty five point oh one. We made a change in section thirty five oh one. Oh, one. Is that I or L? Changing the word. In the document to.
It's actually an I, but it could be an H.
Yeah, I was just looking at that, like, wait a second.
Right?
Yeah, there's typo. Got that, Molly?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be H, and it's a capital H.
They should be.
And J should become I. Under the purpose. And all we were doing there is we were changing the word. In H.
Prevent, to discourage.
Yeah. So in our new copy, it says discourage. All right, we got it now, okay, now from.
Do you want me to run through them, or do you want to, I can.
Thirty five oh, oh, one. Capital letter G, and following G should be H and R.
Do you want me to run through them, like, you don't, so you don't have to say them all, and I can just tell you what I've changed, or?
We need to, we need to have the, that change.
Yep.
She will make that change, but she.
What she wants, I can run, like I usually.
Yeah, she has all the changes.
I know.
Okay.
If you give me a second, I'll get back to that.
Okay.
Yes, if you will go through the changes, but we also need to be looking at.
Correct.
The changes that were recommended by.
Right.
Regional planning at the same time, so we don't have to go back and go through the document twice.
And I'm on the same page.
And I've got a few. Comments about some other things.
Well, that's fine, but.
I'm going through as you.
We can get to those as we go through them, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Very good, all right, it's always difficult when we've got. Massive document like this that we're dealing with. All right, so now we're up to. I'm gonna turn the page unless there's something on thirty five oh, oh, there is something on thirty five oh two, yes.
We had said on thirty five oh two that we were including street names.
So I want to talk about a couple of things after we're done going through this, there's a couple of changes that. This one specifically that we did not include in the text, because when I wrote it out, it didn't quite, I don't think. The result follows the intent that you guys were looking for, I do have it included in the documents that were sent out, it was titled exhibit, so I'm. Gonna, I think, we could go through it now, or we could go through it at the end, it's just.
You've got it at the end, so let's just keep moving through the rest out.
Yes, but I did, I did change it, but I just didn't include it here, because it's not, I don't know, we'll discuss it, you'll see, I think.
And my, my, my other question is, does the CLR actually touch the mixed unit district to the south? There that one little section that it touches it, or does it not? Is there an empty section in there?
Does touch it. I'm pretty sure it does.
I, I tried to compare it and I was having some difficulty.
While you're looking at, when you're asking me a question about, you're looking at the overlay map, you're asking me questions.
And does it touch the mixed use district to the south? Or is there a little blank spot in there?
Right, because that doesn't show.
Right.
On this little overlay map. Because this overlay.
Is just this of the CL.
This one, right.
It does touch.
Does touch, is it like all the way across this?
It touches to.
Green.
Yeah.
On the green section.
It doesn't, okay. I'm gonna reshare my screen here, so give me just one second, so you can see both things at once.
So the.
So this.
There is, great.
So on the screen here, so this little portion here, I don't know if you can see my mouse, I'm on the left side.
North is to the left.
Yes, so this is, so this green map here is from our mixed use overlay, maybe able to see.
So where that little hook comes down, those properties right beside that little hook are the bump out on the other green, yeah, so these touch. So right here is this little bump out right there.
Right, but.
And they are.
But I think. That. To the. I'm on the, the right hand map, green area, what would be the southern boundary. Is only halfway, halfway between line and Green Cook. And to Joni's point, the properties to the west of that bump out are not in the. So it's not, they're not.
Not in anything.
It's not, if those half a dozen properties, I mean, you can see them on here, I think, where these properties here.
Down here.
Actually, Tom, you're going, no, you're wrong, wrong.
Those aren't the ones you're asking about.
No, look. It looks to me like. This here.
So that property.
Give me this.
This property here. No, this property here is that property.
Well, what I'm looking at is.
See what I'm saying, that that line of properties is this line of properties. And there's, there's the hook right there. Is the whatever that.
This is labeled.
Access driveway.
What we're talking about is labeled Robbins Road, is that accurate?
I, I would have to look again, on a larger.
Molly says, Molly says, yes, it's accurate, that that is Robbins Road.
But, but to Joni's point, I think that this group of houses here on that common access driveway. That's not part of sub area A, is also not part of the mixed use area, that's this row of. Of properties, this row of.
Why is this now?
They're not in the mixed use overlay.
They're not in any overlay.
Yeah, they are, then they know PRCD, because that covers the entire.
Yeah, it's not one of these new.
But they're not twenty five eight or something.
No, I'm just, you said it wasn't in any overlay, but it is. But it's not in any of the new overlays.
If, if, if I'm correct.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, I think.
Molly, do you see what we're, what you want to see on the map?
Uh, sure, so this map doesn't actually match exactly this map.
Different.
A couple of other.
Parcel lines are different.
Parcel lines are different.
Makes it a little confusing.
This, this parcel line is, is that parcel, so.
It's.
So what we've got here is this, this row of properties. Out to here. Same as that row of properties, you see where that common access drive hooks down? So we're saying that row of properties was intentionally not in the mixed use area. This is the old mixed use map.
Right.
That property, that row of properties is not, in this map, this is the new, the, the Caroline Road. That green bar only comes this far.
Correct.
And those properties are not in the mixed use area, they're not in.
Is there a reason for that?
I'm sure strategic planning.
I mean, for, for, for one thing, the, the properties are.
Mister Steel Smith, you are recognized to speak, please go to the microphone.
Sir, if you want me to explain it, please look at the map up there.
Oh, well, come on in. It's up here on the screen, dude.
Well, I can see what you're talking about.
We need a laser.
So, this is the old mixed use, right?
Right.
And this row of properties in here, all the way to Green Cook, is not part of the mixed use area. It's not green. That corresponds with. This row of properties here. You can see that split property is that one.
Right, it was cut off here.
And so all you have are these properties are part of the.
Yes.
Sub area A, these properties are not.
Are not, and they have, and never have been.
They're not part of the, of the overlay, the question that Joni raised is why not, and I don't remember why not.
We were just using that as a connector. A block. About what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, it, it might be, these might be difficult to connect because there's no really straight lines.
Well, yeah, so what we have to do is, as we're sealing off. We had to use this to seal off that group, this group here, so that way it was continuous, you had a continuous. Seal going up. In other words, there was no reason to really include these into a mixed use this far back. So this runs so that it connects to this, so that you don't have an open space. Of, of no overlay.
Does that help?
What happened?
There's no open space along county line, but there is an open space of no overlay. In the area that Joni's asking about.
Well, they're, but they're, they're not residential overlay. But, but that's not accessible to, to an annexation.
No, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that.
We're just. Those lots. Go forward.
Only out there, yeah.
They are residential overlay. So, okay.
They're in the residential overlay, referring to.
The one we just passed, the close to.
He was saying it wasn't in any of them.
Yeah, I was, I was wrong, but.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right, so. It, this, did that get clarified for you, Joni?
Pretty much.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
That I will say at this point. On uh, GIS, it will be easier to discern it than it is on these small maps that we're looking at. Well, thanks for asking about that, Joni, because uh, there may have been someone out there in the public that was wondering the same thing. What was happening, especially if they were property over there. So now, by the way, this is the map we were talking about earlier, Molly was saying that it had been changed. Um, the, the one that's up online. Matches what we're looking at, so the discussion, the green, the blue, and the orange colors are correct. Online as to what we're looking at. And what we're discussing tonight, and so what we would be approving if we don't make any changes. Is what's up there online. I just wanna make sure that everyone here and the public on Zoom is, is uh, got that information. Okay, so with that, then we can go back and continue then to move forward. So moving forward to um. Twenty three, thirty, thirty five uh. Thirty five oh three.
Uh, no.
Um, so for the map, I do just wanna highlight what is different for people when doing it here as well. So this is the corrected map here, um, the change that um, is a note is between sub areas A and B, so between the green and the purple. So what you're seeing here is the current map, the correct map, and then this map um. Before was cutting straight across here, um, this was a bit of an error, it's cutting through some property lines. At this border here, so we just changed the map to follow the property lines, it's the only change here, so just kind of. Moving this little area here into um, sub area A. Um, regional planning also had a comment about the map, um, they want us to label um, the township line to the north and we will do so. In the next draft.
So you'll put Trenton Road. You more fit it Trenton Road or you'll mark that as?
Um, I will mark it as whatever the correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's identified Trenton Road and or the township line to the north.
Okay.
Oh, Trenton Road is fine, and then Robbins Road to the south.
Is already labeled.
I don't see it on this.
It's on the, on the new one.
Yep, Robin Joe, okay, uh, so those, those are their comments, I, I have a couple of other comments.
Okay.
Um, Montgomery Road, you see where that is in the middle?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's misplaced, that is not, that's Center Village Road where, where, where that is, if you see.
The lot where Montgomery Road is printed there.
Is still Center Village Road.
It's still Center.
And then Montgomery is.
Should be all the way to the east.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know.
Where Center Road drops down.
See where the, the V starts and Center, Center Village comes up. Montgomery Road stops there or starts there, goes to the east.
Needles. Route thirty seven. Molly Snodgrass, do you want Louis Road on here?
I mean, I'm good, I know what's road on that, but.
Hey, Molly.
Ours is pretty easy to find, it zigzags.
Okay, I'm done with that.
So the suggestion from regional planning, we are going to put those on the map.
Yes. Um, so thirty five oh three, I don't believe there are any changes there. Um, thirty five oh four, um. Regional planning also had a comment um, to list accessory structures as A instead of P, I don't think we have a problem with that and we can change that.
But logically, I mean, we're saying. accessory structures are permitted. In, in the terms of the definition, accessory structures are permitted, even though there are accessory structures in you.
I mean, above it, we do say there's in thirty five oh four C, we have accessory uses and then. I mean, yeah, I guess. We say such uses are designated with an A, and I don't know if you wanna change it.
I, I, the only places I see accessory uses are those, the two energy systems at the end.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Uh, places like Assembly has.
Okay, yeah, I see, there are a couple of. Two.
Yeah.
I didn't have any issue with the way you were doing it. I assumed the blank areas. Are just blank, they're not either, they're not permitted. I, I didn't have an issue with that, I did wanna. Talk about adding a couple of other permitted uses. Um. Based on when I was going through the uh. List of definitions that we have, uh, I noticed that there were some other permitted uses that might fit. Very well in this area. Um, things like animal shelter. Uh, riding stable, veterinary animal hospital clinic or office. Those are all defined in our article four.
And you talked about not owning outdoor gun range just because of noise, and now you want a humane society or something like. It's noisy dogs.
It's not, not really the same, and they have been permitted in other areas as agricultural.
Is there anyone that has any uh, concerns about adding these additional uses? They would become a part of the list under thirty five oh four, am I correct, Joni? That's what you.
Uh, under permitted uses, and yeah, and to me, these seem to be more in line with what we're always hearing from people about. Maintaining rural atmospheres.
Yeah.
So.
Riding stables and shelters and vets and stuff.
Could align with healthcare facilities which are only permitted in sub area A and B. Not in the northern sub area, and I would be okay including them in, in A and B only. Um. Vet clinic, I guess the same thing in A and B. Uh, riding stable.
That falls under the existing zoning. You don't need to put riding stables in, in the design.
Well, they're not listed as permitted uses if they're not listed as.
I, Mr. Steel Smith, if the overlay is pulled down. Then the overlay applies.
If somebody wants to put a riding stable in, they're not gonna pull the overlay down.
They very well might.
Why?
If it's a, if it's a big enough area, then they won't include other uses.
They wanna do something besides it. They may, they may want that to be part of what they're doing, I think.
But they can cut it out, just because you have a hundred acres, doesn't mean you're gonna pull a hundred acres of the overlay, you could pull. Ninety acres, leave ten, put your riding stable on the ten. I'm ju, I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I understand, but I don't see what the issue is in terms of listing it as a permitted use.
Would that be considered a commercial recreational facility?
It could be.
A state, a writing stable maybe, but it's more like agriculture.
It's flat out agriculture.
Right, so you wouldn't wanna include it in a commercial recreational facility.
Bottom line of agriculture, we don't have the authority to touch it regardless of who it is, right?
Exactly, it's already there. You don't, you don't pull the overlay down, do you?
I, I, I would still like to see them, the permitted uses at least in A and B. They, they seem much more. Rural atmosphere than some of the other things that we're going to be allowing.
Well, this isn't necessarily uh, specifically oriented toward that, the, in terms of once it's in place. Overlay it.
Oh, excuse me, may I speak?
Go ahead, Mr. Eisenbrow.
So, we're trying, you're right, it may, but we're not necessarily as focused on the rural aspect in this overlay. And, and we're also trying to have businesses brought in that will bring tax base to the community. And so there are plenty of other places around town here that people can do that. It doesn't have to be on County Line Road, we're, we're trying to develop that. In order to drive our revenue base. So adding in other activities that will have low tax base help. Really is counterposing what we're trying to achieve.
And for purposes of this overlay. Um, I, I'm certainly inclined to agree with what you're saying that. Riding stables is not something that would be um. A driver in terms of someone wanting to pull the overlay down. Uh, because that's not what, that's not what they would be looking for.
Yeah, and if you can do it regardless, then I, I don't know.
Yeah, somebody wants to build a vet or they can buy a piece of property there and do it anyhow.
They can do it without the overlay.
Yes, exactly.
That's what Mr. Steel Smith.
But they would have to still change to like commercial or something. Because it couldn't be just.
Well, they come to you for that.
Yeah, we have zoning on the books for that.
Right.
So. Um.
And we're talking.
Let's see, what, 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 I wanna make, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And say, remember what we're talking about, is the stretch on county line.
Right.
We're not talking about the rest of the community. And what we're trying to achieve along county.
Stretch between Green Cook and County Line, which is actually is a significant portion of the, the eastern half of the township.
And it's not intended for. The type of, it's intend, it's intended for heavier uses.
Yes.
Centerweight tax revenue.
We developed this for other uses, and so if you take. You wanna do a vet clinic, you put it on Center Village Road.
Right.
Plenty of places.
There's no stopping you, except you have to get zoning. Is that, that's the art.
I agree.
So, I would tend to leave them out.
You're suggesting leaving all of the ones that she's offered up as options out, that's what I was coming back to.
I think they're allowed in the zoning resolution in, in, in other areas, so I don't think, I don't think we're eliminating it. Vet clinics are specifically mentioned in one of the zoning resolution, in one of the districts.
Um. Yeah, every use doesn't have to be identified as being permissible in every area, the whole, whole purpose of zoning in some instances is to.
Yeah.
Eliminate that, so that you don't have spot zoning with things just occurring willy nilly wherever.
I think this goes back to the same sort of point, I mean, the school districts, we can say if we want the schools in these ones, but ultimately, we don't have the decision to decide that.
Facilities.
And so I think it's the same, same sort of thing, if those can go in other places, we're just trying to encourage or discourage in this place. Them using them for these lower tax based businesses, we're not preventing them elsewhere, we're just saying, you know, we think there's a better use for this. Find a different piece of land for those, so I say leave them out.
But, yeah, vet, I mean, vet clinic could al, also already fit under healthcare facilities, it doesn't specify that it has to be people.
If it, if you wanted to put it.
If you wanted to put it in this. And I think uh, riding stables and such also fit under the other recreational facilities. Um, that we have there. They're, they're pretty vague definitions.
One of the things that we have to always keep coming back to and overlook is the fact that. We're talking about one designated area and. You know, in terms of the whole township, we've identified uses that are appropriate, different from these in other areas. So, if, if there's a use that we, we want to relegate to a certain area, then the time to, where to put it is in that particular. Um, district that we are identifying, if we want it to be anywhere in the township. That's another story, and that's not what we're trying to accomplish here, we're trying to designate areas that are gonna be. Provide for services and uh, I think what is, Mr. Eisenbrow was pointing out, will be helpful in terms of. Putting up sort of a, a borderline over here that'll become not necessarily a, a wall. But it'll become, will help us in terms of keep us from losing the property to uh, another. Entity like Johnstown, uh, where they may permit uh, the kind of uses that we're including here. And in fact, uh, they're looking at that happening in kind of a short term basis here, we've got uh. Or is it four hundred plus acres that have been approved?
One final comment, if I could, is County Line isn't gonna be a freeway, but it's gonna be darned close. You think about the traffic that's gonna flow on County Line, I don't think anybody's gonna build an equestrian center on County Line. There's nothing gonna be a rule about rural about that at all, when you see the traffic that's going through there. That is gonna be a bustling neighborhood.
And there's gonna be. Two roundabouts on it. Uh, one north and one down south. Uh, so, going back to where we were, it sounds like um. We're at a point where, in terms of uh, the recommendation, Joni. The consensus seems to be that we would not include them here.
Okay, what about um? Does the commercial recreational facilities, does that also include things like public swimming pools? Uh, ice or roller skating rinks? Those sorts of things, they're not really spelled out there.
So, that is in the definitions. We have, so, commercial recreation facility large is defined as a facility including personal walls. Um, provision of athletic and amusement facilities involving active participation, so that could be. Um, racket courts, billiards, bowling alleys, axe throwing miniature golf courses and arcades. Um, and then let's see, it's the same type of uses, includes but is not limited to, so I think that's kind of how that's.
Okay, so those could be included as.
Under the outdoor, or I'm sorry, under the commercial recreation.
Okay, and what about things like? Small breweries, distilleries, and vineyards, wine tasting areas. Um. Which are quite popular these days, we've already had.
It is mixed use though, as opposed to this, this is meant to be more sort of. Production. And higher industry that, or industrial stuff.
We have restaurants without auto oriented uses, so would it fall under that category or no?
Um, it would not, we have specific definitions for both of those for a micro brewery and a winery, um. That, if, if you guys want that to be included here, we would have to add that and then add. Definitely.
Well. Well, we're um not necessarily coming back to that discussion we get had. We don't necessarily need to have everything included in this particular district if we've got it. That's an option in one of the other.
I would assume it's. I think it is.
So it is an option in, um, if the public is a little bit confused, we've got or three members of the uh strategic planning committee in the audience and occasionally they'll be, they will be making a comment and it, because they have been dealing with this for several weeks or possibly months. So they have great deal more familiarity with it than we do. We're we're looking at it in terms of trying to make a decision whether to move it forward as a recommendation to the trustees for consideration. But we have not been involved in all the discussions that the strategic planning committee members have been and the consultants.
So if wineries and microbreweries are in the mixed use area to on the south side, shouldn't they be in like A and B on the east side?
Good question. Other members of the commission?
You were trying purposely connect them.
Is there any reason or was there any discussion on strategic planning to specifically exclude them?
I'm waiting for.
I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm waiting for her to, do you have a definition?
Oh, I can, I can.
I don't, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. For some reason, I grabbed the wrong file. But I don't see a problem in the uh in the lower district.
Yeah, I don't see a.
Yeah, I think if you're gonna allow restaurants, you can allow them.
Yeah, I don't see a problem down there. When I say down there on the southern part.
Yeah, you're talking about uh on the map, that would be area you want it.
And A and B.
Especially A.
Yeah, restaurants are A and B, and I feel like.
Yeah.
You know, a winery or a microbrewery is most likely going to have some sort of food as well. So at that rate, stay in the same spot as.
Yeah, so we put the restaurants in there, talk about planning. We put the restaurants in there. I see this going right along with it, Johnny, because as they come in, we were trying to make something that was pleasing when they come down from Duncan Plains on the Center Village Road and come into Harlan Township, that if you could have nice restaurants, winery or something, you know, a small winery or something like that fits right in.
Should we, uh, I'm coming back to Molly now, Molly Ridge, that is. In terms of uh the definition that we currently have, what's here wouldn't cover what needs to be added to pick up the winery and the breweries. Thank you.
I mean, for microbreweries, so it's beverage sales and it's a limited production brewery typically producing specialty beers and selling them onsite for local distribution.
So they're listed as a separate item. They're not included under broader category.
No, we don't. We don't have them under anything else.
Okay.
The screenshot is having issues.
So then they they would be added here as an individual um row item.
Yes, we can, we can get that added.
And we're talking about those being in um in A and B or just in A?
I think it'll work in A and B. If I found something on Center Village Road would be fine.
All right, so those would, those will be added. That'll be a change.
As one line item or as two?
Um, so I cannot find the winery definition right now, but I know we have one. Um, so it would probably be two, microbrewery, winery.
All right, but they're going in the list alphabetically.
Did have one inquiry already about the the stillery on, what was it, Center Village Road? Is that something that fits in the same?
That was extended home occupation.
Yeah, which which didn't work real well. That's not not really how it should should be.
I know, but that's what they were thinking and.
Yeah.
It it didn't happen.
It was a, it was a distillery. It wasn't a brewery, sorry.
Yeah, that's true.
Nothing wrong with distilleries, I mean. You know, micro distillery is not, you know, Anizer, Whisher, you know.
Do you want that as an option as well? That would also, that would probably be a different thing.
It have its own definition kind of thing?
Um, I would have to look into that. I don't think we have for a micro or a micro distillery or anything like that.
Well, at this point.
There really aren't micro distilleries.
And they don't call them.
There's no, there's no financial uh advantage to doing.
That it's basically just a step above uh your own personal use. Which is basically, that's all it is.
It's a still.
Because, yeah, it's a still. Um, the federal government regulates them.
Federal government does regulate distilleries.
Yeah, and.
And so does State of Ohio.
Yeah, I'd so the people that were getting the permit, we learned a little bit about it when those people were thinking about it. And it's it's really, it's really sticky.
Okay, so stick to the microbreweries and wineries.
Yeah, I think that's enough boost.
Um, yeah.
We we can have.
I I think it is for the time being. That was gonna be my suggestion. Let's just leave it at that. The wineries and the breweries and not worry about a distillery at this point. Okay. And those two will be added. All right, anything else? We can go on to thirty five.
Um, I have a couple of things.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, so regional planning also had a couple of comments. So they said it's number three, and it says clarify the hotel motel use by referencing the applicable section of the ORC or specify that the maximum densities do apply to residential hotels. Um, I talked to Holly about this, and she also wasn't really sure what the best option was here. Um, so if so we wanna talk to them, just reach out and see kind of what they're looking for with this comment.
Could we put it in definitions, just defining?
I guess.
What a hotel motel is and the linking or.
Well, we should already have that in the definitions, so.
I don't, I don't.
The comment seems to be relating to ha- as it would impact uh density, housing density, if you have a hotel that's uh, you know, long, a long term residential hotel.
Yeah.
That that's what they're referring to.
Right, we don't really have an answer, so we kinda wanted to talk with them to see what the best solution would be. And then, I guess, talk, if if this is moved forward, we would then like pre- we would present that to the trustees.
Present the uh potential modification if there needed to be one.
Yes.
To the trustees, rather than having it something that will will be included in what we're potentially going to recommend.
I think so, cuz I I don't think Holly and I have an answer for that comment right now with the information we've received from them.
Okay, so you would get seek clarification on this one from regional planning and then take that forward to the trustees when they would hold their hearing. Okay.
That would be.
Everybody on the commission comfortable with that?
That's good.
All right.
Um, they also had number four, mixed use building is included as a permitted use in sub area A, but the uses allowed in the mixed use building are not well defined. Um, the allowed uses are the uses in the table. I think I think a mixed use building would naturally narrow down what is put there. So I don't think we need to further specify. We already have our permitted uses that we're looking for in the.
Right, and I think that this was an item similar to what we had heard from them before on one of our other.
I think their their question was, does a mixed use building have to involve residential as well as some other use? I think that was the what they had asked the last time. It's not specifically what they're asking this time, but I think that's where they were going with the last time we saw this.
Yeah, and.
Can we say mixed use building comprised of items on this list or?
Yeah, we could, because.
Something to that effect.
Feel better. Just add it to the definitions.
Some mixed use buildings already in our definitions.
Yeah, so if if we just add in there, that that means it's comprised of permitted uses on the listing table, whatever, thirty five.
Not in the new definitions, it must be in the old definition now.
Okay, yes, that those definitions were implemented with the um the mixed use.
Well, we can look that one up then. I don't know, it's not on there, so you have to look it up online.
Yeah, I would like to get a hard copy of.
We will get hard copies. We just don't have them yet. I I know, I thought of that too.
Um, there is also a question. There's also a question in the chat that I just want to, maybe we address before it gets brushed over. Um, Chris and Lisa are asking, how will annexation be prevented once the infrastructure, including sewer, is needed to support um these areas? Is in place? What prevents Columbus or New Albany reaping the financial benefit and the area becoming no longer part of the township? Um, and anyone can chime in, but I think um just quickly to answer that, the whole goal of these overlays is to prevent annexation and make this more favorable for developers. Um, instead of having them annexed, so implementing something like this um allows the township to ret- retain control and retain what it looks like and what goes in there um versus making annexation the favorable option. Um, pulling down the overlay would become the more favorable option. So that is the plan there, tend to that question.
In in light of that too, there was an article, I think in today's dispatch, that Columbus is redoing its zoning code to uh heavily favor developments.
Yes.
So it may, it may not be enough to prevent the annexation if they change their code to really favor developers for whatever they want to do.
This will be the first provision they've made in seventy years.
Yeah, so it's gonna be major.
It's gotta be major, has to be.
But that is all I have um for changes for thirty five oh four.
Fair, okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? On thirty five oh four and thirty five oh five prohibited uses.
No, yeah, I still want no gun ranges, no outdoor gun ranges.
Okay, we'll add that.
Um.
And.
Yeah, I thought we had.
Yeah, that was just a mistake. I had um not had that add.
I thought we had got to that point. And then it also becomes uh important because outdoor recreation facility is listed as a longship. And a gun range would be an outdoor recreation facility unless we prohibit it.
Do we want to specify um martial, no commercial outdoor gun ranges?
No, cuz you can have a private club or something like that.
I think that would be a potentially an issue. So I think just outdoor gun ranges as a prohibited use.
Um, so also in this section, um, we removed the line about no outside storage being permitted, cuz that's what really makes sense with the uses. Um, added no cement, asphalt or similar plants, and then added no overnight truck loading. And then um created a two hundred foot buffer there for engine vehicles from a residential use.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, thirty five oh six, there are no changes there. Thirty five oh seven, just some wording and formatting at the top there in the title.
Um, sorry, thirty five oh seven. Okay, how far did you get into it?
Thirty five oh seven, we've got changes in some of those uh.
Um, yes, so.
Regional.
Regional thing.
Mm-hmm.
So one change that we also made um is in thirty five oh seven D nine, we put up the word residential. Um, this is talking about the ordinary high water line. Um, so this is changed to no structures are permitted within this area versus no residential structures.
And but you left ordinary high water line.
Yep, we just wanted to make sure that all the structures were included.
Yeah, that's important, I think, to try to keep that consistency.
And I've got a note here in in other articles, please enable the search for that where we use that phrase, high, ordinary high water line.
I can look really quickly.
Or we can do that.
I think it was just in the your CD.
Okay.
But I I will look for that. Um. Yeah, I'll find that out. So then um there's a comment from regional planning um for letter E here, preserving tree stands is a definitely desired goal, but staff is unsure they should be excluded as part of the net density calculations. This would be difficult to define. Um, as we have it written, it is determined by the township trustees. So we don't.
I was in other ones too. I remember them saying that comment before.
Yeah, this was also a comment that we had previously gotten and we did not change it.
Don't change it now.
Yeah.
So we're considering that one, but we're not recommending any change. That's what we're concluding. Everyone in agreement?
Yep.
All right.
So then they also had a comment um in J of the same section, um which they had also made this comment before. Um, they don't want us to use or require a meandering path. Um, but this is something that the township wants, as we've discussed, and so we should keep it as is.
Considered and. Did we, did we ignore it in the other case?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this was discussed on the previous um residential.
Mm-hmm.
And same, the conclusion was reached there that Holly would be doing some follow up in the future in terms of lobbying in favor of what we want as opposed to succumbing to what they are recommending here. Everyone comfortable with that still?
Yeah, it's.
All right, good.
Um, so then in L and M of the same section, um, they also had this comment previously um about the two hundred foot woodland buffer um saying that it was excessive um when in comparison to the thirty foot setback from new local roads, but that I think they might be reading that wrong because it's a seventy five and a fifty and a thirty foot setback or setback from the right of way and then the woodland buffer.
Yeah.
Um, so no change there as well would be.
And I think we talked about a lot about moving the buffer closer to county line so that we kept it away from Green Cook.
Right.
And and allow them to build within a hundred feet of county line. I think that was, that was the way we dealt with that. So yeah, that's a, we'll think about it, but no.
So then moving forward, there are just some formatting changes in the tables in this section, nothing major.
Grab to table thirty five seven parking requirements.
Not quite yet.
No, not there, not there.
Checking, making sure there's something else here. Um, in P um, the world, the words for industrial uses has been taken out. Um, and then just some formatting in here as well. I've made sure to spell out the numbers in the text. No sort of change, just.
Yeah, we're going back.
I will say, I did notice when we're talking about limits, we don't have the numbers spelled out for the different components, wanting to get to like standards. Looks like on page seventeen is where most of that. But again, that's good, really.
Sorry.
I believe Tom.
I'm just glad you decided, didn't decide to put them in the tables like that too.
Yeah, so I, yes, I was.
That's just too much.
Um, okay, so yes, then the next change of note is the parking requirements like I stated. I did not spell these out. Um, I think in general, just having the the number in a table is acceptable um in other documents and.
I I very much support not putting the spelled out parts in the tables. Table not for simplification, not for crowding.
Um, so then.
It makes the table harder to read.
Yes, does.
Yeah.
Better without it.
Right. Um, regional planning had a comment for this table um saying that since these pretty much match the parking requirements in the MU to just refer to the MU. Um, I don't think we should do that because I, yeah, I probably like you think it's easier for somebody just to look at one document than have to. Um, I don't think we should do that because I, yeah, I probably like you think it's easier for somebody just to look at one document that has to flip through pages to find the requirements in the procession. So we should keep them here.
Yeah, and I mean, we've done that in some of the other ones where they're very similar, we pulled out their own procedures, but to have one table pull out from somewhere else seems weird.
Right, I agree, that just makes it more complicated.
Yeah, yeah. That's. Um, then moving forward um to T where we're talking about signs, they wanted us to take out these tables and just spell them out. Um, for the ones that only have one line, so. For example, projecting signs, um I would say we should keep the tables as is because if the other. Signs have tables, I think it's, it makes it more um th- than they'd all be the same, looks better if they're all the same, and I think it's easier for people to see the relevant information.
Well, and that's what's in the other thing too, right?
Also true.
I I like the table.
So then after this. And temporary signs, um in that same sign section, we took out um that extent, that extension language that we discussed at the last meeting. And then thirty five oh eight, we've added a section there for the definitions and add a little bit of a clarification. That um the definitions here supersede um the definitions in article four. If there is any sort of conflict.
But only for this.
But only for this article, correct? Um, and then within these actual definitions um. We've changed logistics to the language for there may be minimal production, et cetera.
Can I, could I back you up to biotechnology?
Yes.
Your definition? The last sentence in biotechnology says this type of use is typically fully enclosed. Um, can we possibly change that to this type of use shall be fully enclosed?
Yeah, um, I think.
No, we don't really want things getting out.
That's true. Um. I'm not super familiar with this type of use, honestly, I. Would like to hear what the rest of the zoning commission here, I can ask Holly too what she thinks. Um, I feel like that might just be because, you know, if they are doing things on crops, they might want it.
Crops.
Outside, but I don't.
Bacterial strains and whatever else you have listed here. Anything with manipulating living organisms, I'd really rather have that contained.
Yeah, but it does say common commercial products such as but not limited to pest resistant crops. Chances are you're going to be growing those pest resistant crops outside, otherwise.
Well, they don't need to grow them there then.
You're not, you're not allowed to do that in most places, you have to um contain new pest. Resistant crops so that they don't pollinate the other ones.
That's a good point.
Lead to a lot of contamination.
Yeah, I'm with Johnny. My head shell.
I would just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I wouldn't give the examples, so I would just. They got such as but not limited to. And then you don't have that debate.
No, I still still want whatever you're manipulating your living organisms to be fully enclosed.
Yeah, well, it says that.
No, it says it's typically fully enclosed, I want it to be Shelby.
But will be.
Shelby. Yeah, not.
Yeah.
Just typical.
So period after period after commercial products. And this type of use shall be fully enclosed.
Okay.
Um, and we're deleting the examples?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I'm going back a page to thirty one, once you get, once you get that. Done. I have to keep my reputation. On the, on the new version, bottom of page thirty. Under eight, last line.
Uh-oh. There are two of them, eighteen and fourteen.
What is it referring to?
Spell out the number.
Oh, I'm, I don't know where we are.
The loading dot signs eight on page thirty. There's eighteen feet and fourteen inches.
I'm losing my.
Other than that, that is all we changed, I had to run through with you, besides the exhibits, I also.
Um. Question for the future, when we. When, when we merge all of the definitions into one section. Long definition, so that sentence, those two sentences will just come out. And there'll just be a different, okay.
Um, should I move on to?
Um, I got uh equipment repair large. You got a typo, I assume that's supposed to be contractor's equipment rather than contractor. Okay. And. Healthcare facilities. Um, when I read this, this, this says to me that all of these things require overnight or long term stay of patients. Is that correct? I know a lot of clinics do not, and a lot of surgeries are done as outpatients and.
And often involve, may involve.
May involve maybe, as just the way it reads now, it seems like they all have to include that.
Wordy.
And they're hardly ever.
You're saying, yeah.
They're hardly ever doing overnight stage anymore.
A lot of the specialized hospitals. In particular, like e-surgery.
Yeah.
Hip surgery. They don't stay overnight. Is that necessary? Maybe the, maybe there could just be a period after providing health related services. What do you think?
It could be a period after services.
It doesn't exclude it.
Right.
Um, overnight stay, but I'm not. But if you put a period after services. Seems like it would cover all.
That would be okay with me.
All right, Molly, you got that one, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just thinking maybe, maybe we just change it to May, just so we are mentioning that that is allowed. Instead of cutting it out of the definition overnight, the ability to have anybody overnight.
No, we wouldn't be, I'm not suggesting we're cutting it out, no.
I agree, but I think just saying it may be, it may be permitted is.
Okay, so may, may involve instead of.
You can say which may involve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think that would be a better.
Sure.
Okay.
Under the uh maker spaces. I see the large, uh looks like it does not include the ability to um display or sell. Just to create. But maker space small. These makers, maker space, base, small maker spaces allow the play and sale, but the large ones don't.
I think it should also have that.
Okay.
And.
Under office, the two sections, large and small, for office administrative business, et cetera. Um, it should probably be professional rather than just profession.
Type.
Mm-hmm.
And, sorry, go secondary schools. Um, I'd like to add at the end of that sentence, or have an equivalent credential, for example, GED. And I know a lot of technical schools will take a GED instead of a high school diploma. Okay. Uh, I was just wondering, I know in. Article four, I guess, we probably have an automobile oriented use definition. And this one is going to supersede it. Is there some reason that we really don't want something like a convenience market or a gas station in this area? Uh, you guys. Well, that would, that's it, just.
For me, what, what was? I, I.
We don't, it, it says that we're not going to be allowing something like a convenience market or a gas station or, you know, those sorts of things in this area.
Is that for the nor- northern?
This is all of it. This is the definition of auto oriented uses.
This would go, if it goes in the general definition, it applies to all. Across, uh it goes entirely across the township.
I think convenient park is supposed to be in there.
In the definition?
Yeah.
But it is part of a definition of an automobile oriented use, so. Well, besides, besides traffic, what was the reason for not including automobile oriented use?
Well, the gas station was one side. The convenient parks, to me, it's something different.
Well, this says gas station parentheses, including convenient.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's the convenient mark that's associated with the gas station. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I.
Well, that's what's in the definition.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, so I, I was trying, I was separating the two, so it's, it's a gas station that has a convenient mark.
Yes, that's what. Uh, currently is stated in terms of automobile.
You don't find.
Under automobile.
That was voted on, not to allow that, they figured they'd be across the street.
Okay, I mean, it's just, you, you don't find convenient works anymore without a gas station.
Right, well, I, I was thinking, yeah, I know. But I think the, the, the thought was mainly centered on the gas station.
So you're basically all just trying to keep fast food joints away. So this is fast food joints that.
I don't want.
Yeah, but I don't, I, I don't see that as being.
Well.
They, they almost always have a, a drive up window at, at any fast food stores anymore.
So what people forget sometimes, when we're working on this, it's like Steve's definition was. You know, there are certain businesses trying to attract to this area, but you don't have to pull the overlay down. To get your Dairy Queen or to get your convenient bar, you can go for regular zoning.
Yeah, in the overlay, automobile oriented uses.
Right, but you, you don't have to use the overlay.
I understand.
Yeah, so that's, that's a lot of times people think, oh, you're, you're eliminating this stuff, no, we still have a zoning code. That you don't have to pull the overlay down for that particular property or a part of that property.
Well, and the overlay requires a minimum amount of acres.
Twenty-five acres, right, so, but what I'm saying is, in, in order for me to get my Dairy Queen, I wouldn't use the overlay.
Right.
Yeah.
I think Joey was just trying to clarify and make sure that uh that was something you want prohibited.
Well, right, on the overlay.
So that's.
From the overlay.
Perfect segue, um, this was something that Holly um was considering for discussion here, so this would add um. A little, couple of words here um to thirty five point oh five G, um prohibiting. Um, automo- automobile oriented uses in some areas A and B instead of the entire. Overlay.
Oh, okay.
So this was.
Under prohibited uses?
Yes.
That was thirty five oh five.
So like in the heavier industrial layer that you could have.
Be allowing.
Which, which one specific?
Um, thirty five oh five G.
Gee. No outdoor storage?
No, 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 this.
I thought you were talking about automobile, yeah, that's H.
Yeah.
No, the new one has it as G. The old one had it as H.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the old one, I guess, sorry. Okay, automobile oriented uses shall be prohibited. But in some areas is what you're adding.
In subareas A and B was something that Holly thought um. Would be a good addition, that is up for discussion.
Okay. Yeah.
What change tomorrow?
I think that she's thinking that um there are, there's potential for automobile oriented uses to fit in the character of sub area C. That is more industrial um and heavy, in, in general, a little bit of heavier uses.
And if we're thinking that thirty-six, thirty-seven is going to become the thoroughfare that it's going to become, are we going to have something like a flying J or?
Yeah, not a flying J, but with certain gas stations.
We might have a gas station up there.
Yeah.
On the north end, somewhere close to thirty, thirty-seven.
Down across the street.
Close to that. I don't have a problem putting the A and B in. So everyone else.
That's nice.
Any comments from the strategic planning member? Guess not, all right.
No, we're even along.
Well, you were paying attention.
No, objectively, I agree, I think sub area C can fit auto oriented uses. Non, non objectively, I live in sub area C, so. Don't favor that, I'm trying to be objective here.
Happens to all of us eventually, something goes in next door that we don't want.
Yeah. Um, and then so the last comment I, exhibit I had to discuss was um the comment about um adding wording about. The boundaries of the sub areas, um you'll notice that. It's not, it's really work, and it's not always um perfectly following roads on every boundary, it's not a perfect. You can, you can read it, um, so for example. CLR overlay sub area A, um bounded by Green Cook Road to the west, intersecting Center Village Road to the north, County Line Road to the east, and Robbin's Road to the south, that one's okay, but. So this isn't super clear, intersecting, you know, I don't, I, when I was writing it, I couldn't quite figure out a way to better word it. Picture is showing it.
So in the cases where follows behind a property instead of going to dark road. Let's say hypothetically, property owner in the overlay district buys property behind him, combines the two. Then things are getting really messy and we have a parcel that's half in the overlay and half not. Is there a reason other than just wanting to connect the two overlays to try to create a buffer? That the mixed use A B didn't go all the way to Robbins so that it could just be. All the way to Robbins and then, you know, that could be our line just coming to Robbins, so Robbins.
Oh, yeah, we don't, we don't want that much in that mixed use area. I mean, it's always from the county line up to Bancho, both sides of Bancho.
I, I understand, I'm just thinking about. The hypothetical property line changes over the years, which could happen. And so does that give us a really messy line to work with?
Well, I think it, it's less likely to happen if we have this in place, it's some, somebody's not going to have a. Um, a zoning on one side of, one side of a piece of property. Molly, what if you took these maps? Extracted the green area and blew it up to a full eight and a half by eleven with all the parcel things on it. And you put, and you put the, the roads that you can along the edges.
Right.
But people would see. There's my parcel.
Right.
So the reason I asked about the parcel, property line switching though, is if you look at the, what is this? Southwest corner of the little bump out on Robbins, it's got this parcel behind it that is basically landlocked. So. So I don't think it's.
There's a lot of things that may be landlocked, we don't know if they all belong to the same person or not.
Um.
This is, but I don't think this square here.
I didn't see any landlocked, we have some parcels. I didn't see any landlocked. We have some parcels. Yeah, and that was a big discussion. We have some parcels where the farmers. We assume it was farmers sold off the frontage. And then they left themselves, are you ready for this? You guys will love this, twenty and thirty foot entries. So if you don't zero in on them, you think that parcel behind there is landlocked.
It's just that you can't see it on the map.
You just can't see it. And when we started going through there, I go, I called my, uh, Mike Cannon out and I said. You gotta look at this. I can't believe there's so many of them.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's a bunch of them that only like twenty and thirty feet. Uh, we've got one, three big parcels that are using the same entry. I don't know who owns it, but they're, they're coming in. And so two, two parcels look like they're landlocked because the farmers are using the same entry. So.
So, but those parcels are being farmed?
Yeah.
Currently.
So I'm, I'm more okay with your idea of blowing it up if we're not, if we're not willing to move boundary lines, which I get at this rate, the other overlays.
It might help to blow it up because once you blow it up and then you can start to see the, the way they're getting in.
And oriented vertical, so you don't have to.
I think that will be more clearer than trying to do it in words.
Right.
Yeah. Can it, can it be surveyed at some point too? So we could say that, you know. Basically from this, this line over, is there any sense in doing that or looking at the existing surveys of the parcels? So then. Survey.
If you put the boundary around.
Clearly got money coming in from somewhere. Where do we get all these screens?
No, no, but, but e- even if you don't serve it.
The D I S.
But the, but the, uh. Regional planning will have it, they'll have the overlay on them. So you'd be able to go to the, to the, to the overlay and look at.
But does it then get the coordinates?
Once the, uh, overlay is created and then you could go to the G I S and get, and come down to the specific areas. It'd get a lot more detail.
Yeah.
But. They will need to know, meaning regional planning, where it is that those lines need to be placed.
And hopefully that'll come from these exploded or these expanded.
If it helps any, I like the, I like the blown up map with the parcel number.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think that'll answer a lot of questions on as the guy, for future reference also, is he landlocked? Is he not landlocked? How's he getting in? Because we were worried about it, yeah. Because they're not conforming at all.
Was he going to build a flag if he's got twenty foot access?
He can't.
He's not.
Right, he's gonna have to buy something.
Exactly.
So, so that, that was the problem when we discovered all these. There's a bunch of them.
Uh, and the farmer did that because the, the farmer wanted to just have access.
All I was thinking about is why that farming tracts.
Yeah.
They weren't thinking in terms of building on it in the future.
Right.
But at this point, then it becomes a problem.
Yeah. They will have to buy property.
Yeah. So.
Get rid of the big wordy.
Well, what we're going to suggest that is we're, we're dropping the idea of naming the. Uh, writing a written description after all, and going with. Do we want any language here to reflect that discussion?
If it's clear, if it's clear, can we leave the description? Like if, if, if it's clear that our east west is county line in Green Cook.
That part should be clear.
Can we leave county line in Green Cook in the description and then for the other messier lines? Like county line, Green Hook and Trenton, those were pretty.
Honestly, I don't see anything wrong with your wording as long as you add the expanded mapping.
So you thought. Okay.
Do though. That's the other possibility. Yeah.
Okay.
Would there be an, would there be errors created? Or conflicts created by using this wording?
That's, well, that's my concern, I guess, because, you know, where it says things like. Of course, I wrote it, but intersecting Center Village. On the southern border for. Where? Do I list a parcel number?
Technically, it no longer intersects.
Oh, maybe I wrote this after.
Oh, let me see. Cause you used to go straight across.
So how about we just say expand the map?
I mean, it's always, I guess it does intersect there at that one corner.
That you can list, and if there are, list them, and if they're messy, just leave it.
And I think the clear boundaries you'll have labeled on the map.
Okay, so just so I understand, I'm gonna list. The boundaries where there's clear roads, and if there's not a clear road, I don't write anything.
I, I, I would say. Ditch the wording and just mark the map, your boundary. It says Trenton Road versus Green Cook.
Okay.
And then it'll be written on the map. Large size. You should be able, I mean, if you can read a map, you'll know where you're going.
Okay.
Don't you know, okay?
Mr. Jim. Maybe what we made. Since we're describing this, we may want to put something in here. If we're, are we going to have words here at all?
We're going to have the words that were already there.
Mm-hmm.
I think what's, can you see?
Find it again now. What, what were the original words?
Thirty-five point oh two.
The overlay district is divided into three sub areas. And to see any differences between A and C are listed. I, yeah.
Yeah, I think you kind of did that.
What do you?
Do that again, I'm sorry.
I think you kind of need that, those couple of sentences anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So leave that paragraph, make that word.
Just come in, Steve.
Sounds great.
All right, Steve.
Okay, so we're gonna have a map which clearly outlines, so there are no existing properties bisected, right? They are all. They are all on the G I S.
One side or the other.
Okay, so if you got a big map. Clear boundaries drawn, and maybe you don't want to, I don't think it's that much work, you could also have a listing. Of each of the properties in each of the segments, sub areas. So just list. So then there's no question.
That sounds like a big pain, but.
Well, that's a lot. And what if they change?
What do you mean?
If it splits.
What if somebody splits the parcel?
In your own.
Then you have to change your whole article.
Big map, big lines.
I can do that.
If, if, if there is a problem, I mean, it's a threat. It potentially is an issue.
Yeah.
All right, so we, we have reached the point where we've decided we're not going to include language other than that original language.
Yes.
Everyone in agreement?
Yep, yes.
Yep.
Took us a little circle to get there, but, uh. That will make sense once we get that map.
Yes.
All right.
George is gonna have a big job tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
That's right.
Is. Is there, is there any way we can see this before it goes to the trustee?
But you'll, I mean, you'll have a, a, a sheet of all the changes that you're making.
Yes, I will. Be sure to.
The, the. In terms of us seeing it. We may in fact. Have the opportunity to see it, but if you want to have a discussion, then we have to schedule another meeting and it has to be. And there's no time for that.
I don't think we've already gotten nitpicky enough. I think. I think we've gotten the big stuff.
Yeah, I think if we're going to move it forward. Uh, if there is something that happens that there is a concern about. There isn't any reason that we can't, uh, address that at the trustee meeting.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, uh, with that said, uh. Let me open up the, we, here we have, we've had comments coming from the strategic planning committee, but there haven't been any other comments coming from other members of the public. If there are any members of the public who, who have a question or a comment. Please, uh. Bring that forward now. If you're on Zoom. Uh, DG will, uh. Acknowledge you or unmute yourself and start talking to us.
The only two members of the public that's sitting here, very bad.
Are there members?
Are there still members on Zoom? Cause we're not seeing the list.
There are, uh, not count, maybe about six or seven, once you've counted all the people who are in the room that are also in the Zoom meeting. Um, there's been a couple of comments from Scott Dwell. Um, there's the comment from Chris and Lisa earlier about the annexation that was already answered. Um, but Scott Bill, Scott Ellis' comment. Um, was a map of all of Harlem Township properties as of today would be very helpful township office. We have one of those somewhere.
We, yeah, we just got to do one.
But somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhere around here.
There is one, but it, of course, will have to be updated again at some point when, uh, this overlay district gets approved. So then. The map will reflect, right now. Mike Cannon does have a map that reflects those, uh, districts, those overlay districts, as well as everything else. In that way of zoning districts that have been approved, and he has that in his office. It's, I don't, it's not a wall map, but it's about three by three, something like that, three foot by three foot. Uh, and it, it will be updated by regional planning again. And that is available on G I S.
Yeah.
That current map.
Molly, you, you may run into a problem when you've got a map, sub area C. Uh, from the public. Sub area C.
Okay.
So long and narrow.
This is a question from.
We're on two separate maps. I would be fine with it.
Okay, I'll, I'll see what George can.
This is a question from Jen. What should we expect with this development in regards to taxes? How will this affect our property? Values, I'm guessing she means, and what are the pros and cons? So that, that's the final question that's in on chat.
I don't think any of us can predict that until stuff actually goes in because, you know, until, until developers. Purchase the land or start developing on the land, which again, in most of these cases can't really happen until sewer is in. How, I don't know how any of us would predict.
Yeah. I just don't make any, responding to the fact that she put a question.
Yeah, no, thank you. No, I'm glad, and I think that, uh, Virginia, I agree with what Virginia's saying. And the other thing that I. Uh, I think that we could definitely expect is by the fact that we've got intel and the other development that's happening in such close proximity. That that in and of itself will raise property values in the overall area. But that doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up tomorrow, but down the road, when the. Auger's office comes in and does the, uh, reevaluation. That might result in your taxes going up at that point, but until there's a reevaluation, it won't be affecting taxes at all.
And, and even then, there's some taxes that are limited in the amount that's collected.
That is correct too.
So if your rate goes up. I mean, if your value goes up, your rate goes down.
And the school district, that affects that way. Yeah, for sure, so.
So now you know that I want to open this can of worms, but speaking of, speaking of sewer and things. If, if Johnstown, whatever sewer Licking County is using, is creeping this way faster, can they say to our eastern edge properties? Yeah, we'll put sewer in for you once you annex. Is that a threat that they can leverage against us?
Delaware County has very clearly said they will serve all of Harlem Township. They're not interested in giving up pieces of them. For them, it's revenue.
And so they have the authority to say you as an outside county cannot come in and provide sewer.
No, but they can. They're not gonna have real sewers.
They can offer a competitive service. Let's put the sewer.
Have both. I just wonder if. Pressure is coming in heavier from that side.
Can Johnstown provide it soon?
When, when we talked to Tiffany, um. They're, they're gung ho that Delaware County is Delaware County sewer. And. You know, they're going to service it. They don't want anybody else in. Uh, it wouldn't make sense. They can't even get their own stuff serviced right now.
Yeah.
So for them to try to break into Harlem Township, uh, there's just nothing on the table.
And.
It may be fine.
You know, we're now getting. Information and interest coming out of Delaware County that is new in the sense of, they weren't lending us their ear much in the past, but they are willing to do that now.
Yeah, so we, we report, Tom, Tom and I reported on this. We had a big meeting with Delaware County sewer.
Right, I know.
Yeah, and, uh. Uh, I'd be happy to talk to you about it when you want. Uh, very well received. Uh, they were very cordial. Uh, we did get a ton of information out of them. And, uh, but we're, the, the whole general thing is to keep. At a Delaware County project and to keep Harlem Township a Harlem Township project.
Yeah.
And, and they're working towards that end. That answer.
I think that, I think that.
For now, I mean.
The best we can do right now.
Yeah. Again, nobody knows what it's gonna look like in ten years because we haven't lived it yet, but.
Yeah, right. So I would say right now, there, there's no reason for two sewers when they can't even service their own.
Yeah.
The only thing you worry about, which is we're all worried about, is annexation. So you could get annexation with somebody else's sewer. But there again, if we. You have to remember that the property owner is the one that requests annexation.
Yeah, I understand, but I also know.
He's got a sewer down, coming down the street. And the one over in the other entity is ten miles away. He's not going to go with that.
Yeah.
So as long, that's what the whole, this whole exercise is about, that we can offer competing zoning, competing utilities. And not have, you know.
And those utilities need to be at a competitive price, so.
Yeah, I can't control that.
Um, there's been another.
But they're better, they're better, we will be in a better position to provide that through Delaware County.
Another comment from Zoom as well. Um, just, uh, just as a comment, this seems reactionary and may not be in the best interest of the township. How do you envision sewer being put in place?
It's developer driven. It's developer driven for new, new developments.
Yeah.
And in, in case you, in case they don't know. Columbus is digging a hole in the southwest corner of the township to bring sewers up to.
You must, must not live in that corner if you don't know, because we hear it all the time.
Well, we, we, we as a township are not initiating sewers in our township.
No.
It is not up to us, nor can we control that. And so, uh, they're coming, they're, the hole's being dug. And so all the work we're doing here is trying to find ways to work with the county in a manner that works. To our liking and tries to preserve the lifestyle we are living.
The one comment, in case the, uh, person who was asking the question isn't aware. That I would add is that this isn't something that is brand new. This is something that was agreed upon forty years ago. Uh, with, uh, Delaware County and the city of Columbus when Polaris was built. It's all part of an agreement that, uh, in terms of, it hasn't happened, but it's happening now in terms of providing the opportunity for Delaware County. To deliver sewer. Uh, to this part of the county, to Harlem Township. And it's because of the agreement that's been in place, but it hasn't been, it has not been implemented until now. So, and as, uh, Mr. Eisenbrand just pointed out, we're not initiating it, but. And Mr. Steel Smith, in terms of the need for the individual sewers and the decisions will be made as development occurs. We're not going to be putting it, uh, in Delaware County, deciding where those. Uh, feeder lines are going to go. We're not making those decisions, but hopefully we won't be left out of the discussion either. We don't want that to happen.
Yeah, that's, that's the main thing. We're trying to stay in discussion, uh, as Tom would say, with all the utilities. You know, plus we're working with roads, water, you know, the public needs to understand that. And like you said, Mike, we didn't initiate this. But we're trying to stay in contact with all those entities for the betterment of Harlem Township.
That's our goal. Do what we can do to protect the township to the maximum extent possible. Um. With that. Any further? Questions or discussion from the commission members? All right, then what is your pleasure with regard to application twenty-three, reach H T C twenty-three oh seven? Article thirty-five.
Well, I will do this off the top of my head.
Oh, you mean you did come up with a rough draft in advance?
Yeah.
You want a five minute recess to do that?
Oh, Brittany does not, please spit it out.
All right, I see DG, DG has her pen in hand, so speak slowly, Tom.
Article thirty-five is good, let's approve it.
It's corrected.
I make a motion that in view of the fact that the proposed article thirty-five, uh, county line. Uh, road. Overlay district. Um. conforms to the intent of the township comprehensive plan. Um. Who else? I don't know. And you can find, we, we're not saying it conforms to the zoning resolution, because.
No.
No, no.
Right.
Right.
Conform to the, to the, to the comprehensive plan. Um. Um. That we, uh, we should recommend its approval by the township board of trustees.
I will second that.
And you're recommending approval of H T Z C. Twenty twenty three oh, oh, seven. Um.
Article.
Article thirty five, county line overlay.
As, as corrected tonight.
Yes, thank you, Jenny.
Yes, that's correct.
As corrected. At tonight's hearing.
Yes, and also with one.
Contingent upon the update.
I mean, you, you're, you're gonna have something we haven't. Viewed yet, you're gonna have for the trustees, that one item in that, and early on the.
Alright, so that added in a phrase, it would say like, including the additional recommendation coming from. Uh, Holly, Manny and Molly Ridge. Is that accurate, Molly, to state it that way?
Are you talking about hotels?
Yes.
Yeah, maximum density of hotel motel.
Okay.
Okay, so.
You wanna read that back maybe?
Alright, well, we try it again from start to finish though.
What? I think it's already been seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I second.
Good with, with whatever you pull out of Zoom, we, we got it all there, I think. So.
I seriously, I do want to know what, what is the motion, cause at this point I don't, I heard you second really fast.
His motion.
But his, what you seconded was, nothing of what we stated after that then would be included, that's what Johnny's fault is.
Alright, so it's.
She just, she just said as the, as amended.
As amended tonight. Did you include that?
I seconded his amendments to his.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that part, thank you. So Tom is accepting the amendments and the seconder is accepting.
Seconding, seconding the amendments that Tom made to his initial motion.
Alright, so.
Alright.
With that in mind, uh, any further discussion? No, alright, then at this point, uh, DG, please, please call roll.
Alright, Mike Kavler.
Hi.
Jenny Manson.
Hi.
Virginia Lewis.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Alright.
Brittany Hope.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. So the recommendation is for the, uh, article to move forward, recommended to the trustees for adoption. As part of the township zoning resolution. Alright, with that, uh, then.
Close the hearing.
We're ready to close the hearing, yes, so we can adjourn the hearing at this point, have a motion to that effect.
I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, this, motion to adjourn our hearing and a second has been made, the second came from Brittany or.
Or Jenny, whatever, whatever.
Virginia moved and Brittany seconded, so all those in favor, oh whoops, any further discussion? You know? All those in favor signify by saying aye, alright, okay, the hearing is closed. Now let bring the meeting out of recess, is there further things to be discussed?
Just, just a note for, for Mike Cannon, um, in the calendar, it says. Uh, there's a special trustees meeting tomorrow.
They changed it.
It's not tomorrow.
I thought Kendra essentially got it first.
Okay, but that, but they, they need to receive.
She wasn't sure they'd get it in the morning, so they're, they're gonna do it the Thursday morning.
Gotcha.
So their hearing will be on Thursday.
Yeah, they'll, they'll set the hearing date on Thursday.
Set the hearing date on Thursday.
Receiving it on Thursday.
They're receiving it so that they could. Hold the hearing, I think they're still planning to hold the hearing at their regular, regularly scheduled monthly meeting.
But that means they have to have it in the. Public notice posted by Sunday. Ten days between Sunday and.
And they're meeting on the twentieth, right?
I think they're on top of that, they understand.
Well, I think they can post it on Saturday, I think if that's the way it works, if I recall correctly. The Delaware Gazette can get it in the, in the Gazette on Saturday. Now, if Saturday is sufficient notice in terms of the number of minimum days required for when their hearing or their regular meeting is scheduled, then they should, they would be fine.
It, yeah, Saturday would be okay, Sunday's the deadline for them, or they have to push the, the hearing back.
Yeah, so by doing that, they have it on, uh, they can get the notice to the Gazette. On, well, I'm assuming that Kendra would probably have to send it up there on Friday, cause it has to be, I don't know what their.
I think they're planning on that.
That the plan?
Yeah, she, she told me, uh, to let you know that she had moved it and that she's on top of it.
Alright, she's on top of it, that's all we can count. Alright, so I will be working up an agenda for our meeting next Monday, it's only six days from now, folks. We have a hearing and we will have some other items that'll be on the agenda relating to, uh, what Virginia has brought to us. We will have minutes that, uh, we will be reviewing, uh, DG's going to be busy giving notes, ready. Cause we have to have the hearing minutes for the clerk and tonight's hearing, so that we can.
Yep.
Deal with those. Uh, soon as I, uh, soon as she has them ready, we will get them sent out to you, so you'll have it electronically to look at prior to Monday. And then on Monday, hopefully, we won't have to spend a whole lot of time, but we'll have to spend some time reviewing them.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, Brittany, oh, that was down at the other end, Virginia seconded. Any further discussion, you ready to adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Good to see you, see you Monday.
Long day, see what you missed the last. Is this your piss?
Don't let him drop before Mike can get the message to him, so. You shut it down.